Okay, well, welcome everyone this evening. And so we've got quite a few awards going on this evening and we have a good turnout. And with that, would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, roll call.
Olson, Collins, Johnson, Kellam, Kupczynski, Coburn, Kenopa.
Here. Okay, and our first presentation this evening is the Preservation Awards. And Anne Catlin, she will lead us this evening.
Yes, thank you Mayor and Councilors. I'm Anne Catlin. I am the Lead Long Range Planner in the Community Development Department. And part of my responsibilities include managing our preservation program. And we're blessed to have a lot of wonderful resources. And we have those resources here for the community because of a lot of work that these property owners do. So tonight, we're going to recognize several of them. And with that, I'm going to try standing over here this time so that I don't have my back to the word winners, but I apologize. We're going to see how that works. So this year's focus before I stand up is stewardship that improves Albany's livability and economic vitality. So the first award is for a property on First Avenue. If you drive down First Avenue heading over to North Albany, you go by this building all the time. It is the Nodings Building at 135, 139 First Avenue. And they're actually not in the Historic District. It is a historic building, but we wanted to recognize Cory and Nina Barton for all the work that they've done over the last year to really completely change the exterior facade and give it a fresh new look. And the top photo in the presentation slide is the before. And then below, it's hard to see and the coloring isn't quite as vibrant as on the screen, but is the after. And we wanted to recognize them for their ongoing efforts, even though they are not in Historic Districts and aren't required to go through review. We just appreciate their efforts of being good stewards and also members of the community. So with that, come on up and get your award. Yes, they've also gotten one. Thank you so much. Okay, so another family of longtime stewards in Albany is the Reed family. The award was going to Shelley and Forrest Reed because technically the property owner's at 135 Fifth Avenue Southwest. But Roger Reed is here. And they collectively own many properties that are historic and they always maintain them very well. And we really appreciate their ongoing efforts to maintain their properties. And they're in very visible locations. This is Fifth and Ellsworth. And again, the slide doesn't show the color very well, but they just got new paint colors and it just makes a huge difference. And it's a very visible street and we really appreciate the ongoing work that the Reed family has done to keep that area of Albany looking very nice. So I'm not sure if Roger, if you're coming. Oh, well, no, they are back there. I didn't even see you back there first. Come on up. Oh, or Shelley. Thanks. Shelley Reed, thank you. Okay, so the next project you may have heard about if you listen to NPR or you read the paper. I've got a couple of slides for this. This is a really big project that went on all summer last summer and kept several people very, very busy. It's the Central Elementary Schools Seismic Improvement. So the school district received a $1.5 million grant. And that was because Gary Dahlquist applied for this grant and they just completely overhauled the building. And there were concerns from teachers and others that, oh, my gosh, what's that going to do to the building? Well, the contractor, and he should get an award too, Jan Baldwin, did a really great job of keeping that interior intact. And then on the exterior, they had to do improvements. And the new escape stairs actually look a lot more like what's in the original drawings. And everyone is so pleased with the school renovation. So I wanted to show you some photos of before, well, actually during and after. So in this slide, we have the top photo, sort of the main hallway under construction, and then down below, it's put back together. You can see the fire escape stairs going in. They're now painted a nice shiny black and they've got nice tops on them. But that actually is a design that looks more like it did originally. And they had to go through a historic review for the stairs and it went great. They had a great architect team. And there are some more slides. So I know that my kids go to this school and I feel so much better that they'll be safe. And the teachers are really happy with the end result. So the gymnasium is probably the biggest transformation. They did a lot. And the floors are beautiful and it looks pretty much brand new. And we know that this building has got all the modern amenities that it needs and it will also be safe for another 100 years. It's almost 100 years old. It was built in 1915 by Charles Bergeroff, who is a very famous architect for schools around Oregon. And we're lucky to have many of his buildings in Albany. And I can't remember if I have another slide on this one. Okay. So I wanted to recognize a few people that were instrumental in making this project happen. And I happen to know Chris Equinot, the principal, we call him Mr. EQ, worked all summer long and weekends and into the school year to make this project a success. And school board member Micah Smith is here tonight as well. And then, of course, Gary Dahlquist, who's a foreman, and he did apply for the grant. And everyone that worked on this project really deserves a round of applause. And it did get national attention and statewide attention. So thank you. Picture, a picture moment. Thank you. Okay, well, we have one residential property tonight that's really undergone almost as much work as Central, except a little bit of a smaller scale. And that is this house owned by Leah and Derek Olson. It's 317 Fourth Avenue Southeast. It's in the Hackelman District. And these are some before pictures. It's really hard to tell, but the paint just was not sticking to the siding anymore and it really needed some repair. And so they did get a small rehabilitation grant last year. We gave out four and we have given out 10 this year. And it's making a big difference in helping these homeowners make these repairs. But they spent a lot more money than their grant and really did a whole lot of work. I'll show you that. You can see on the left photo at the top that they had to completely replace the siding there. And they had a great contractor and we're lucky to have several of them here in town. And so you can see it's all put back together and with fresh coat and paint. And I know that they're really pleased with the result. And it took longer than they thought, but they got it done in time for the award ceremony and we're really very pleased with it. And I think they deserve an award. So Leah is here. I see her here. Come on up. Thank you. Okay, so the next award is sort of a two-part award. We have the owners and the contractor. And this is the Caffey's Building downtown. This is 211 First Avenue. And Richard and Kathy May own this building. And when they purchased it, they just pretty much got to work right away on improvements. And this is a before picture. It's hard to tell really how much work it needed in this photo, but hopefully the next photos will show you how much work actually did happen. And so not only did they refurbish the exterior, but all five units upstairs have been remodeled and improved and are much more livable. And it's great to have downtown spaces that are quality spaces that we're very proud of. And if you were on the lottery, you've probably seen some of these. Here are some more before pictures. Just, you know, not super nice, a little cluttered and not as many amenities. And a lot of work went into making these places much nicer. So just looks so much better after. And there was a lot of work done by Anthony Dosty. So it's sort of a two-part award, the owners. And then Anthony really did a lot of work to restore all of those windows, as hard as that is. But he had a lot of experience growing up on the Northeast. And he restored all of them south facing and back facing. And they just look great. They work well and did a lot of nice touches on the interior. And we really want to recognize both Richard and Kathy May and Anthony Dosty for their work on this building. And Anthony also works on other historic buildings. And he always calls and talks to me and he's very conscious of making sure that he tells the owners the right thing when it comes to historic buildings. And we greatly appreciate that. So maybe we can have Kathy and Richard come up and Anthony. Thank you. And I just wanted to say that we've had a lot of events going on during Preservation Month, May, National Preservation Month. The theme this year was See, Save, and Celebrate. And one of the events was the Hidden History Downtown Albany Scavenger Hunt. And fortunately, Oscar has had the time to go out and take all these pictures and put together this neat and fun activity. And we already, we've already got the award winners. There weren't that many correct entries this year. So the award winners for that are Mike and Beth Putes. And they will get a gift card to the Albany Picks Theater Downtown. So you might want to participate next year because it comes with a prize. And we had a lot of other walking tours. It took a lot of volunteer time by our Landmarks Commission. And I wanted to recognize our Landmarks Commissioners that are here. So if you all would please stand up. We have Oscar Holt here, Dave Pinyard, Cameron Settlemeyer, Bill Riles, and I see Jessica Pancrentz is not here. Who else are we missing? Jessica and someone else. But they work very hard. Oh, Jolene, right, Jolene. So I want to thank you for your time and thanks to all of you that are helping keep Albany a wonderful place to live. Thanks.
And I want to also thank Anne for all of her hard work, too. And we're very fortunate. We have wonderful advocates for historic preservation. And we wouldn't have such a beautiful historic stock in our community if it wasn't for all the dedication from many citizens being able to make sure that we preserve that historic stock. So we're very fortunate in Albany, but thanks to everyone. Okay, next for our scheduled business would be under Communications. And we have Albany Visitors Association update. So Jimmy.
Let's see how well I follow instructions. Mayor and councilors, thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk to you today and tell you about some of the things that the Visitors Association has been doing. First of all, as you know, we were located across the street in Two Rivers Market. And last summer, we found a new location down on Third and Lion Street. And we moved to that location in July. And spent part of the summer having cabinets built and putting up racks of brochures and that sort of thing. There was enough space in there for everybody, all of the staff, to have their own offices with doors and windows. And staff is really pleased with that. As you see Rebecca is in her space there. And of course, when we moved, then we had to have new stationery printed, new business cards. So it was a good time to think about the branding for the organization and to look at what the branding should look like. The first logo, the one with the tall lamp post, is what was used when I first came here 14 years ago and had been used probably since the beginning of the Visitors Association. There are times when you have to shrink that logo down pretty small. And that lamp post kind of fades out after a while. When it gets down there pretty small, you lose some of the lines. So at some point along the way, I cut the lamp post down in half, added some color, and was using the little one on the corner there. But this was a good opportunity for us to put together a committee to say, what should the logo look like? Should it be a covered bridge? Should it be a historic home? What do we want it to look like? And that's what the committee decided. It should still be the lamp, but it should be more of a graphic representation. And then they came up with the tagline, "See Albany, Discover Oregon," saying that we're kind of a sample of what you would see throughout the state. We still have to put together our permanent signage for the outside of the building. And that's coming, hopefully, before July. And the logo that you see down at the bottom is the colors for the new logo. And that's what's going to go on the sign out front. There we go. I know it's hard to think about summer with all this rain going on outside, but summer is coming real quick here. In June, we're going to start some summer hours for the Visitors Association. And so we'll be open Saturdays from 9:00 to 3:00. And we're going to do that through the month of June. And then we're going to evaluate how many people actually come in on the weekends and see if that really is something we need to continue. We have a new brochure that will be out by the middle of June. And if you remember the passport program from last summer where the kids got the treasure map that was printed on the handkerchief? And then they went out to the different businesses and the businesses had activities that they did? And once they completed the activity, they got a little footprint stamped on their map that they'd been to those locations. That program is going to happen again this year. Instead of the treasure map, they're actually going to have passports that they're going to get stamps in as they go around the community. It was a very popular thing to do and a really good activity for families. So we're pleased to have that back again. A different kind of a treasure hunt is geocaching. It's kind of the grown-up version of treasure hunting. It's where someone takes, hides something and then posts the coordinates and clues as to where it's hidden on the Internet. It's called Groundspeak, the website that they post that on. And then folks go and download that information and go out and find those caches that are hidden out there. So we're going to have a year-long geocache program here in Albany. We're going to have three, the people that do this really are into collecting coins. So we're going to have 300 of the coins minted that are like this kind of a stamp shape. But it's going to have the Kathy House on this one. And when those are given out, we'll find a different historic home to feature on the coin. And should keep people coming to the community and keep them moving around the community so that we can kind of show off what we have here in the area for them to see and do. For the last 26 years, the Visitors Association has run the kiosk program. And we have about 25 volunteers that are out there to answer questions of travelers as they go by. And they're instructed that all roads lead through Albany. So no matter where anybody's going, they're going to direct them through Albany. Last year, they helped about 11,000 visitors at the Sandy Amrest Stop and gave out thousands of cups of Allan Brothers Coffee that Allan Brothers donates to us to give to them. We have comments, collect comments out there. And some of the comments are, this is the best rest stop coffee that we've ever had. And they are always thanking us for helping keep them awake because they need to finish So I'm sure you've seen racks like this at lodging properties in Washington, Oregon, California. And they're always full of information about Disneyland or Universal Studios, never what you really want to see when you're here in the area. And you can't get into that without a huge charge for getting into that kind of a system. So we bought three of these racks. And they're going to go into three of the lodging properties. This is just kind of a test to see what those racks looked like when they got here. They are very nice, so we're going to be ordering some more. This is filled with actual local information so people who are staying here can actually find things to see and do here in our local community. So the staff and I attend lots of different meetings, are involved in lots of different groups. This is just a list of some of those that we represent you at around the state. And one of those is the Oregon Tour and Travel Alliance. And about a year ago, we hosted that group here in the community. And Rod Porsche was the staff member who took the lead on doing that. He, in their off time, took them to different restaurants, gave them tours of historic homes, took them to the carousel, really showed those folks what Albany had to offer. The president of the OTTA is Melody Johnson. And when she was all through and when they were breaking down and getting ready to leave, she said, so how many tour buses do you get here in Albany? And we really couldn't answer that because we don't know. And she said, well, you really should. You've got so much here to offer. It was one of those projects, you know that you've beat your head against the wall trying to make it happen, but you didn't really know how. She's the key to this. So we've hired Melody and she's going to be acting as a contractor with us. And she's going to help us get ready to go to two different tour operator shows, one in LA, one in Seattle. She's going to help put together eight to 10 itineraries that will keep those buses here in the community for two to three days and nights and help them find things to see and do here around the community. Now, we know that they are coming. They're traveling up and down I-5. As a matter of fact, we do have some that stop and spend the night. They just get back on the bus in the morning and leave. We want them to stay here for a couple of days. As you can see up there, a bus load, a motor coach of 30 people means $10,000 to $12,000 a night when they stay in the community. And that's what the National Tour Association quotes. So Melody is going to not only help put together that information, but she's going to teach staff how to go to those shows and help us connect with the proper tour operators that will be interested in the product that we have here. I've used the analogy in the past, and I apologize to those of you who've heard this. It's like fishing. We have gone fishing in the past. We've placed ads in magazines or in the publications that these folks would be looking at. And that's like putting your line in the water with a really nice lure on the end and hope a fish comes along and hope he's hungry when he sees your lure. But Melody's going to take us to the fish market and she's going to pick out the biggest and fattest fish and wrap them up and put them in our arms and send us home with them. So we're real pleased with this and really excited about how that is going to turn out. So just a couple of real quick things that are coming up this summer is the Family Motor Coach Association, their Northwest Rally, Area Rally. You have a copy of this newspaper in your packet that Rebecca just handed out to you. And the first section in there is all about Albany and what they can see and do while they're here. And that's going to be held out at the Lynn County Fairgrounds. It's going to be about 200 to 300 motor coaches, I understand, that'll be out there. There it is. And then in about one year is the Oregon Heritage Conference. It's going to be here in the downtown area. And there'll be folks wandering around, enjoying all of those buildings that we just talked about that were getting refurbished and repaired by those folks who just got awards. So there should be a couple hundred people wandering around through the streets at that time. This looks a little bare, so we'll fill them up by next May. And I thank you for your time. I would certainly encourage you that if you have any questions or need some more information, that you stop by our new location at 110 Third Avenue and talk to one of the staff members or me and we'll be glad to help you out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jimmy, is there any questions? So Jimmy? I think, you know, a lot maybe on the council don't realize or witness as much as I do is how much that, you know, AVA does for our tourism. And when I'm at events, boy, they're always there. You know, there are sometimes certain events, you know, Jimmy's staff is there the whole event long, you know, being there to be able to give out, you know, tourism information and information on our businesses and restaurants. And a lot of time put in, a lot of dedication, and we really appreciate all you do. So, okay, thank you. Okay, next is Greg Rowe, the Executive Director of United Way. And he's going to give us a 2-1-1 update.
Hello, Greg Rowe, United Way of Lynn County. I do have some extras of those. What you received in your packet were the Lynn County statistics. These are just for Albany, the ones that are being passed out, which is actually probably more relevant to your area, obviously. For those of you who are not aware of 2-1-1, it was a call line that was installed for Lynn, Benton, Lincoln Counties. It's actually statewide about two years ago. And what 2-1-1 does is it's a call line where somebody can just simply call 2-1-1 and it gives them a complete listing of every single nonprofit and state social service program. As you'll see in these cars that are coming around, it lists everything from mortgage assistance to food boxes, clothing, any kind of social service system you can possibly think of is now listed on, you know, on 2-1-1. We actually have Dar Merrill here with the county who is actually helping us go throughout Lynn County, Lincoln County, and Lynn County in entering every single program. Some of the, and this is all listed on our website, by the way. But some of the things, we've been coming over here every six months. Some of the things you guys might, you know, that I think are important to point out as far as this Albany report goes is that two things I think are very important, at least on the front page of the City of Albany report. Electricity and water assistance continues to be number one. And, you know, basically, if you add those together, it's number one. Those two are the top needs that have been requested over the last year. They've been that way for the last two and a half years. And I haven't seen those changed. The other big one is rental assistance and mortgage assistance. Those are the other requests that we're getting on 2-1-1 at the call center. The other important thing I think to note on the front page is that about a year and a half ago, the United Way, along with the Boys and Girls Club and the Samaritan Health Foundation, created that dental clinic at the Boys and Girls Club. In the first two and a half years, dental care was in the top five, usually number three or four. It has now dropped. This is the first time that I've seen it drop to number seven. And actually, it's just barely above the dental, the dental care, I mean, the medical needs. So if you see on the front, we are making, when we're serving 1,400 kids and adults, actually, we're serving 1,400 adults plus 900 kids. We're screening on top of that. You're starting to see the impact. So these, you know, 2-1-1 is pretty neat in that we can get statistics or what are the programs that are impacting in our community? Well, we've seen dental care drop dramatically, okay, from people, you know, getting that service they need. On the second page, I think, was, you know, as we talked about, Marilyn Smith, by the way, has been my former board president twice now and has been on our board. And actually, City of Albany has been very supportive of us and the community in general. I mean, the City of Albany is just wonderful. But anyway, regardless of that fact, some of the other points I wanted to point out on the second, on the second page is that, you know, unemployment is, you know, those people who are requesting is, you'll see, you know, where are these calls coming from? They're from unemployed and underemployed. Those are our top responses. You know, those are the ones calling the most. I think a couple of the other reports, other statistics on that second page, you know, the key of the 2-1-1 is people are finding out what they're eligible for. And I think 93% you see on that bottom left corner, you know, people, you know, these unemployed people do not know a lot of the times, you know, what they're eligible for. Well, this system is meant to help those people like who are out at the mill and so forth, getting, you know, being laid off. Get them through, cut through the system. Instead of having to, you know, hop around to Fish and 10 other places, now they can call 2-1-1 and say, this is what you're eligible for. This is what you're not eligible for. You can go here, here, here. Okay, I think that's a very key part of that system. I also like the stat that 100% of people who called 2-1-1 were satisfied with the service they got on that program. Go ahead.
And I'm glad you brought that up because that intrigues me. If you go right above that, this is anecdotally, there's 44% of the people were unable to get the help they needed.
Yeah.
And of the rest of them, 73% of them were not able to get the help they needed. And yet, 100% said they were perfectly happy with the service.
And you know where that's coming from is that, most of that's coming from, if you look on that front page, utility assistance and water. look on that front page, utility assistance and water assistance. Okay, most people like the Salvation Army, which you'll look in the back, Salvation Army are one of the people who provide those services, Fish of Albany. Well, they budget throughout the year, let's say $1,000 every month or else, you know, technically, these agencies could blow through utility assistance in one month. I mean, Annette Hobbs over at Fish, who everyone knows works very hard, she could give out vouchers to pay in December or January for utility assistance, it'd be gone. That's where most of those are coming from, are from...
Yeah. I work for Community Services Consortium. When they have the Energy Assistance Program.
Oh, yeah, you're a big one.
He'll have 400 or 500 people standing in line, just literally waiting to get it.
Yeah, and that's a good point is CSC is our top referred to, if you go to the next page, CSC is our top two referred agency. And we make sure that agencies like CSC and Fish get this report so they can use this in their grant writing. We email this every single time, but he's right. CSC gets, I mean, you could literally fund those programs. We just couldn't, we can't fulfill them. And that's where that's coming from, that lack, you know, unable to meet those needs, basically. It's a big point.
Since we give the water utility, you know, payment assistance, so evidently we need to find out from CSC, then if people are being turned down, where do they fall within that classification would be kind of a good to find out? Because I think most of ours, I remember when we established the program, I think it was more geared towards seniors and people that were homeowners, so.
Yeah, and a lot of it also is point, a lot of the times is, you know, you can only go to a service once in a year.
Yeah.
Well, we, United Way ended up helping a senior. I ended up paying out of my own pocket, but anyway, you know, she'd been, you know, she'd already been there once to Fish and couldn't go there again. And that's a lot of the problems. You can't go twice. I mean, technically, these agencies could fill those requests month after month.
Wow.
So, and it's not just low-income people. A lot of them are seniors, a lot of them are unemployed. And these numbers aren't, at least the two, the utility assistance and rental assistance, it's the same for Lebanon and Sweet Home. They have some different needs underneath there. For example, dental care is higher up. You know, they're still in the top five when you go to Sweet Home in Lebanon because they don't have that clinic. So, I mean, you can see where a program has made significant impacts by, you know, like that. Okay? But we are seeing the total number of calls increase over this last year. And I guess the next-to-last page, you know, CSC is our top referred to agency, Fish of Albany, Salvation Army, DHS is actually fourth on that list. But I think the last point I wanted to make on this was that, you know, almost 20% of these people aren't low-income, as you see on the back, because we take, they ask everything but name, social security number. They ask, you know, just general, you know, demographic info. Well, you know, 20% of the people aren't low-income. They could be a grandparent asking for childcare, trying to find childcare after school for their kids or their grandkids that they've, you know, been caring for or whatever it may be. But the city, the police department has been very good about, and the school district has been very good about using these cars, 2-on-1 cars at all the schools. CSC has them, all of our agencies have them, the police department, when they, you know, they do a lot of social service work, same with the fire department. They have these cars, and so when they're going out on these calls, if they see a family they need, they just give them, say, "Hey, call 2-on-1." If you're a school counselor and you're sitting there with a parent who's having issues with a child, whether it's behavioral or whatever it may be, address school care, you know, let's get on the phone, and they can get those services they need. Unfortunately, like you said, I think the utility assistance and rental assistance, those are always, you know, I don't know how we're going to address that issue, but those two have not budged in the last two and a half years that we've operated the system. But it's encouraging to see dental care budge way out, you know, it's going down.
We will have that certain source of funding from the CDBG, you know, funds that we're getting now that we're the entitlement community. So there is the $50,000 category towards public, you know, services. So we'll probably have many agencies that will be applying for the small pot of money, but that was one that was talked about in our task force that we had was more that rental assistance.
And you have more, you're more than welcome to these statistics, you know, I can get these quarterly, so you can have up-to-the-date stats and use this information to, you know, what are the needs on that quarter, so.
Yeah, yeah. So that, when this was first established, then, because it was kind of, you know, put on United Way to be, you know, administering over this, the funds that you're able to receive, is it able to fully fund your program for, you know, staffing to handle this?
We have one employee who's working eight hours a week. Dar Merrill, actually, at the county, the county is donating their space, but he's the one entering all the, actually, all the new programs for Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties. We're partnering with Lincoln and Benton County. We pay for our set, though. We've been very fortunate. Julie Manning and the Samaritan Health Foundation has supported this big time. Central Lamont has supported it big time. United Way is putting about $10,000 itself into this program because not only are we helping people get the services they need, but we have stats for when we're allocating money.
Yeah.
What are the needs? Plus, we're able to, plus, we're able to give the city, school districts, all of our agencies, CSC, these stats to make a case in the grant writing, fundraising. I was just talking to Annette Hobbs today about that.
Great resource, yeah.
So it's turned out that was an unexpected benefit, but it's a great resource.
Yeah.
So.
That's great. Okay, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much, Greg. Yeah, wonderful information, and thank you. All right, so next, council, we have a public hearing. And this is for the incorporation of South Albany Area Plan projects into the transportation system development charges for, this is Spald, before we open the public hearing, staff want to do a report, or I can open it first?
Ron will be coming up to present this report. Just a reminder that we did have discussion with council at your work session on April 22nd about this issue, so hopefully you remember some of that discussion.
Good evening. I think I brought too many papers. I'll try not to get confused here. I'd like to start with just a brief bit of history. In 2010, Albany adopted and updated Transportation System Plan, a TSP. Part of what that TSP did was look out to year 2030, the way the transportation system would operate then, and identified needed projects between now and then that needed to happen in order to accommodate the growth. Those projects went into a list. They totaled in cost about $242 million. A portion of that total was growth-related and therefore STC or System Development Charge Not too long ago, earlier this year, the city undertook a larger planning effort in the South Albany area, the South Albany Area Plan. Part of what came out of that project was a list of transportation projects needed for that specific area. Those are above and beyond what was in the TSP that we adopted in 2010. So when the council adopted the South Albany Area Plan, at the same time, we adopted an amended set of projects to the TSPs. We added street projects, transportation projects to the TSP. What we're doing tonight is taking those new projects that came out of the South Albany Area Plan that have been added to the TSP, and now we're trying to incorporate them into our STC methodology and fee structure. So as your previous work session, staff presented a proposal about how to do that. The proposal is the same one before you tonight. I'll briefly go over some of the assumptions that were in there in a second. The projects that we, that came out of the South Albany Area Plan, a couple of different changes. We eliminated one street project. We added several intersection projects. We amended or changed the, basically, the structural section, the number of lanes that happened on some other intersection projects. So in the proposal to amend the STC fee, staff made some assumptions about how to incorporate these new projects into the STC methodology. One of the assumptions was that the basic fee structure, the rate that we charge development today would not change, so that a development that comes in after we adopt this plan will be charged the same fees as if they'd come in yesterday. So the cost per trip would not change. We assume that projects that had a, that were identified as short-term, as high priority projects of the community, that those would receive a priority for funding. We also assumed that projects that we expected to be constructed by developers in the short to midterm, so between perhaps today, maybe 10 years out, that for those projects, we would try to fund at least the oversizing component of those projects, so the projects that accommodated more than just what would be needed for that particular development. Projects that we thought would be developer-constructed but in the long range, so 15 to 20 years out, would have a low-funding priority. And that's the way we tried to distribute the funds. Basically, we're in a situation, if we keep the fee flat, what we have is a larger pool of projects competing for the same amount of money. So there's a little bit of misogyny that has to happen with the fee structure. In terms of how we decided what oversizing was, for intersection projects that were either roundabouts or traffic signals, we tried to fund those at basically 50% of the improvement cost, assuming that 50% of it would be driven by development needs and the other half would be oversizing. For collector road projects, we assume that 15% of those projects would essentially be oversizing. That's above and beyond what a typical local street would cost. For arterial road projects, we assume that percentage would be 25%. So we'd pay a higher percentage for the more major roads instead of 25%. There were two pieces of information that weren't in the agenda packet that were placed on the DS in front of you tonight. One of them was a copy of the resolution that had some highlighted items in red. In content, it is exactly identical to what's in your agenda package and what went out to the public. The reason we put that in front of you and highlighted the red is that what's highlighted in red are changes from what we presented to you at the work session. And the change is basically one project. That one project is the Albany Corvallis Path Project. That's the subject at the moment of a enhancement grant that Benton County is providing to ODOT to try and get that project funded. The estimate for the project in our TSP was about $435,000. The county's current estimate to build that project is just under $1.5 million. So what we're proposing to do with the TSP, because we're in it now and we're updating the fee methodology, is simply change the cost estimate of that project from the $435,000 to the county's estimate. We're not at this point talking about changing what's actually funded for that project. The funded amount will remain the same at, I think, $304,500, is what I recall. That's the only change that's happened since we presented you information at the work session. There is a list of individuals and groups that the city must maintain by ORS statute of people interested in hearing updates to the TSP fee. We contacted everyone on that list about the, this revised project, the path project. We didn't receive any objections. We contacted them both by phone and by email. So that's the only change that's happened since your work session. There's a second item that we presented to you tonight on the DS. It's a letter we received last week. It is from a representative of the owner of what was previously known as the Hinshaw Farm property. It's in the South Albany area. The letter's by Jamie Morgan Stasny. And to just summarize the letter, there are four TSP projects in the South Albany area that abut that project. They point out that the cost of development is high, and they're asking that those projects be funded at 100% of their eligibility amount. At a staff level, I think we're comfortable funding just the oversized portion and the way it's set up now. The projects that she identified, the intersection project, is funded at 50%. The arterial roads are funded at 25%. And the Oak Creek Parkway, which is a local street, is funded at 25% of the construction cost of the piece between Columbus and the railroad. And the reason we funded 25% of that is that in the development code, when we adopted the South Albany Plan, there's a mandate that at least 50% of that road be open on the north side and precluded from developing. And so there's some city need to come up with some money in order to offset the cost of that road because we are asking that, we're limiting the development potential on the north side, basically. So with that, I'll stop the staff report and see if you have questions and try and answer them.
Questions, Ron? So Ron, your update was on both items, right? A and B, because you talked about the fee.
Yes.
Right, okay. Right, seen any? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing at 8:01 PM. And is there anyone here that would like to comment on this item? Okay, not seeing anyone, and that would be for 1A and 1B. And, oh, we didn't have, oh, wrong one, yeah. Okay, and no one signed up. All right, not seeing anybody. With that, I will close the public hearing at 8:02 PM. And council, what would you like to do with this item? You do have the new resolution that was handed out, which would replace the one on page 14, and the other resolutions on page 38. Do you have questions?
Just edification, maybe. I was not hearing it quite properly. Ron, on the letter that we got from the folks that are wanting to do some development or start that proposal or that process within six months, they're recommending one thing in the TSP, we're doing something different. And have we gotten any feedback from them based on any of this, or is that all still up in the air as to how that's going to be funded for what they're asking?
Their request was basically that we fund 100% of the eligible amount of those projects. I think they've seen the proposal. There are preferences, we fund 100% of all of those projects. At a staff level, we have a difficult time recommending that you do that. For instance, if you look at just the Oak Creek Parkway project, that's a local street. It's 100% eligible. They will be developed, be able to develop along probably three-quarters of the frontage of that road. It makes not a lot of sense to staff that you would fund 100% of that road cost, but that seems to be what they're asking for. Similarly, the intersection improvement, they're a fairly large parcel with a fairly significant impact on the transportation system. They themselves will drive some level of intersection improvement there. And so that we fund only a portion of it seems reasonable. Now, this is, I think we mentioned earlier, we talked about the STC methodology, that it provided you a lot of flexibility about shifting money back and forth between projects and that you were likely to see developers and members of the public come in and want to shift money back and forth. This is the first example of that. You are likely to see a lot of these requests, and they will be, you know, the judgments about whether to do it or not is a subjective call, case by case. And this, at this particular instance, staff believes that the amount that we're funding the projects next to this particular development are in fact representative of the oversizing cost, and that it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to fund more than that. If you run across a project that you want to provide more incentive to, or an area, then you might look to fund a higher percentage of those projects, but you would be taking money from other projects to do that.
Could we separate the two resolutions and act on them separately, please?
Yep, go ahead. The first one would be...
With that, I'd move the revised resolution that was on the diocese as attachment B tonight.
Okay. All right. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried, and that is one on the diocese that replaces the one that was in on page 14, so the next one's page 38.
I'd move adoption of the resolution on page 38. Second.
All right, and any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Right, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Here, just a comment on the whole process. This is an example of integration of long-range planning with the South Area Albany Plan and the inclusion of the infrastructure costs to a point that you actually get the funding relative to the system's development charges. A lot of communities don't make that link, and it comes back during the planning process and the site plan review to always be a huge headache. And this is upfront planning with integration, not only of land use, but financial planning for infrastructure. And I think staff to be complimented for making that happen.
Great job. All right.
I would agree with, kudos to staff. When you have someone asking for 100%, when, you know, we're only talking about other places not getting anything because it is a finite pot of money, I think that's exactly... places not getting anything, because it is a finite pot of money, I think that's exactly, they gave exactly the right response.
All right. Okay, so next is business from the public. And first of all, I think we'll go ahead and take up the resolution that came to us Monday for the health care. And, let's see, I think on the Diaz, there was handed out a document?
Right, this was the, you had requested of staff that we get a copy of the most recent version. To the best of my knowledge, that this is the amended version. It's the a-engrossed version of the House bill, which includes all the amendments that came out of the hearings process to date. The last hearing, according to the schedule that we came up with, that came off the government site, was, I believe, on May 14th, and it's currently awaiting further committee action. It has not, it came out of the original committee with a due-pass recommendation, but is now at a subcommittee of the Ways and Means, and they have not, as yet, given it a recommendation.
So, but May 14th was a public hearing?
Right.
That was held. And so from there, we don't know whether it's going to move forward, or they make it...
No, and I really didn't try and do much investigation, because at this point, it would just be speculation. It needs to be, until somebody makes a decision to give it a recommendation, it's kind of in limbo. And I think that's, I'm sure the proponents will say that one of the reasons they're asking for support from the council is that the supporters would like to see it move, and perhaps a recommendation from this body could help make that happen.
Did you find any update, or have you heard any more? Edith?
No, my information is the same as Mr. Hare's information, that it's still in the Human Services Subcommittee, and they're just waiting.
Okay, all right. Did you have any other comments on it, or...
Yes, I would, do I need to identify myself? Yes, my name is Edith Thorne, and I live at 2054 54th Avenue Southeast in Albany, in Richellum's Ward. And I represent the Albany chapter of Health Care for All Oregon, which is a statewide coalition of over 60 organizations who are extremely concerned about the current state of the delivery and the cost of health care in the state of Oregon, and are working very hard to try to remedy this situation in some way. And our resolution applies to House Bill 3260, which is a, asks for a feasibility study to check into various possible delivery and related cost systems for providing health care, hopefully in ways that would be less costly and more efficient than we are currently finding. And the reason that we are asking the City Council to pass this resolution supporting House Bill 3260 is exactly as was stated by Mr. Hare, that everyone is being impacted by the situation as it currently exists. Private citizens can't afford health care, and employers in business have difficulty trying to provide health care, and more and more of them are opting out of providing health care to their employees, and that includes city government as well as other public employers. The costs continue to rise, and it takes a bigger bite out of budgets. And so we think that some decisions are going to be made about changing the health care delivery system, and we think that it is very important that studies be undertaken so that we have information on which to base a decision. Fifteen other studies have been undertaken throughout the United States and other states, and we can look at those, but we feel it's important to gather information for Oregon also. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Yeah, Floyd?
Edith, what would be the adoption process, or the process, if this bill does not come out of committee? What happens at the state level?
Well, we will continue our efforts and hope to build enough support for that so that it can be brought back at a later date.
But in the meantime, the state will be doing something. How does the state move to make decisions absent the availability of this information?
Well, that's what we're concerned about, because we're not sure just exactly what they would base their decision on. They may postpone any decision and just kind of bumble along. And we're hoping that if this is passed, and there seems to be a fair amount of support for it, since it is a study, that this will help then in arriving at some kind of a decision, because failing a study to provide information, your guess is as good as mine as to what they're going to base any kind of a decision on.
And you really led into my second question, is the group Health Care for Oregon, what other municipal or county organizations have they approached to seek similar support of?
Well, I know that the Corvallis City Council has passed a resolution in support of 3260. And Lane County Democrats, that's not a city, but they have supported it also. And I think there's some others, but I don't have a list of the other cities which have come out in support of this measure. Sorry.
Good question for Wes. Do you know whether the League's taken a position?
It has not shown up on any of the legislative updates that I've seen from the League, so I do not believe they have. Typically, they would not, because it's not, the study really is, it's not proposed to be funded by cities, and it does not have direct involvement of cities in conducting the study.
Well, Edith, it looks like on, just I read through this line by line...
Yes.
And it shows that the preliminary progress report is for the 2014 session...
That is correct.
Final report ostensibly for the 2015 session.
Right.
So basically, you're talking about a year and a half...
That's correct.
And then looking at the scope of what this is trying to do, I'm wondering how that can possibly even be accomplished in that timeframe and come up with a reasonable, notwithstanding how it's to be paid for, but just the scale of it seems, it's out there, big vacuum cleaner, and take everything you possibly can get. So I'm concerned about, it's not really targeted, it's just get everything we can, and then is everything supposed to stop in the meantime, these other programs that are coming down the pike? Or this is just in addition to?
In addition to, yeah. For instance, in Oregon, we have a major new development of the community, the program that Governor Kitshofer has put forward to provide a different delivery system for members of the Oregon Health Plan. And that's a major undertaking, and it will be more than a year before we really know, you know, how effective that is going to be. In fact, it'll probably be two or three years. So I don't think there's too much danger of the state legislature taking action in a manner without careful study, because there's a lot of concern about funding, of course, and budgetary implications, and the Health Care for All Oregon Group is planning to spend at least two and maybe three to four years building a base of support among citizens, and hoping then that with that base, they can convince the legislature that something needs to be done. So I don't think action is imminent.
Hey, Reg?
On Monday, and I think it was you that said that there was a portion of the state that was worried that there may be required spending by the state on this at some juncture.
I think what I said was that there was some concern, and the reason it was sent to Ways and Means, even though it does not call for state funding to fund the study, there was concern that there might be some implications, for instance, some administrative costs that might require tax dollars, and that's why it was sent to Ways and Means.
I really don't have an issue with this. I mean, if private organizations want to put money forth to study this, I think, great, let's do that, if that's what they want to do. I'm a little concerned that it may be premature, from the perspective that, quote, Obamacare, unquote, is not even finalized. We don't know what that's going to look like, really. I mean, there are some, yeah, you kind of see where the soothsayers are telling it's going to go, but they're coming up with mountains of regulations yet, and, you know, a bunch of those are different than they said they were going to be before, so, you know...
Well, one of the things that is part of Obamacare is the activation of insurance exchanges, and Oregon has opted to participate in that, and has received funding, and the work is being done now to organize the insurance exchange, and it's supposed to be operational in 2014. And that is one of the plans that 3260 hopes to include in its study, is how well that will function in allowing more people to have coverage.
I did notice one of the items that they were talking about is using a sales tax. I mean, I don't know, I've been through, I think, about a dozen, or zero of the last dozen attempts to put a sales tax someplace in Oregon. I mean, you know, it's throw the paper airplane out there in the middle of the fire and see how fast it goes down.
Yes, that's true. That's one of the possibilities suggested, it would be a dedicated sales tax, however, to health care provisions, so that it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't go into the general fund.
I mean, I have no, if the council wants to pass this, as long as there isn't any public money going into it, hey, private folks can do what private folks can do, and whatever they feel is in their best interest.
Other comments? I think they're...
Do you think the study will stall and maybe put off some good solution to our health care problems?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
You say that it's going to take time to figure out how to pay for it. It's going to take, obviously, it's going to take time to do the study.
Yes.
You think in the meantime, the state might be on the verge of doing something worthwhile and say, oh, we'll put it off until the study gets completed?
Well, I would question whether the state is on the verge of doing anything. They are right now committed to this program of changing the health care delivery system for members of the Oregon Health Plan, and that's a major commitment, and is involving a lot of people. Lynn County is combined with Benton and Lincoln County in the CCO organization, and they are just beginning to get organized, because they're trying to change the delivery system from taking care of acute health problems to one where they emphasize prevention and monitoring of chronic conditions, so that it's no longer just fixing something after it's broken. And that's a major change. And so I really would doubt that the legislature would be doing anything besides kind of waiting to see how that's going. And I think that would be the governor's position also. I mean, he has basically said that.
I'll have to agree with Mr. Callum over there, that I think the more information you have, the better, and if it isn't costing the taxpayer to do it, why not go ahead and do it?
Okay, with that, with somebody, counsel, what would you like to do with this item? Would you, do you want a motion to support, or not?
A resolution. I move we adopt the, how do I word it? Proposal to support House Bill 3260.
Okay, is there a second? Oh, I don't see a second on that.
Madam Mayor, I'd go ahead and second it just to get a vote. I'll second it just to get a vote, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so there is a motion, and there is a second, and is there a discussion?
I would simply like to make sure it's in plain talk, in plain language, that there is no, there is no possibility of spending, contingent upon no spending of any tax dollars.
Yeah, and I think that's what was in the bill, so, right. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, okay, thank you, folks. So the motion was passed then to support the resolution. Okay, thank you. Okay, and with that, we are still under business from the public. So is there anyone else, anyone this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Yes, Mr. Owen?
My name is Dick Owen. My last name is spelled O W E N, and I live at 810 Cox Street, Albany, Oregon. And at the end of this month, I will have lived there 44 years. She's handing out some things that I need to discuss.
We already did. Yeah, we already have.
Oh, you already have them? All right, this is a statement of delinquent taxes from a assessor. And the whole thing is based on a bill. I've paid my property taxes, and I got the 3% discount, and this thing came up, so what it is, is a sewer bill. You shut my water off when I was paid up completely, so therefore, there's no meter that we can meter on the sewer. And I've been paying $20.60 a month for two units of sewage. That's included in all the costs. Now, I have to deal with this. Now, this is, in my opinion, it's extortion, because I used two units of water that would go into sewage, but yet I'm getting charged for eight.
So, and we've discussed this before.
Well, it's extortion, and I will not be a party to extortion.
So we have an update for you. So, Mark?
Sure, at the May 6 work session, we had a discussion about dealing with issues such as this, and giving some discretion in the language. We're working on that, and the plan was to bring that back to you in June for your consideration. We had a little bit of discussion, I hope you remember that, on May 6th, at the time we were talking about the sewer rate increase. So you should be seeing something in June for further discussion and consideration.
So we have...
Well, Mayor, I can't wait on this thing. If you read the notice there in the dark print on the real estate, I have three years, and they're going to foreclose on me. And this is on a sewer bill. This doesn't have anything to do with property. And I've taken this up with the county commissioners, and boy, are they hot under the collar on this bit of taking bills and making our county assessor the bill collector.
So, and Mr. Owen, as we've had multiple phone calls on this, I've told you there is a process to follow, and we are dealing with it to be able to go through the process to change the ordinance, but whatever is from that ordinance, from there forward, in the future, the ordinance would apply. So it wouldn't apply to the past, so that is still a bill that you'll need to pay. So that's your choice to not pay it. But we have to be fair across the board to everyone. So, and so we need to be fair on that. But we had the discussion a few weeks ago at the council level on changing the policy, and as our Public Works Director said... and as our Public Works Director said, we will be taking that up again to get that finalized, and you're welcome to attend those meetings.
Is this based on eight units of water?
That I don't know, but I'm presuming it could be.
It is. It is. And that's extortion.
So, well, that's your opinion, so.
No, that's the law. When you bill somebody for something and you don't give them the service, now, I have no problems in paying the two units. I'll pay the $20.60. I have no problems with that. But I will not be extorted, and I will not be a party, and I will not put you into a position to where you're extorting the public. I think too much of you to do that. Now, I suggest that since you need some time to work this thing out and such, that you have Mr. Hare that handles this thing, talk to Dave over there, and he can figure up what the back payments are, because I owe, because I won't pay the units, I'll pay the two. He can work it out, and we'll get this thing cleared up. And there's no sense in taking up the public's time, me being here, taking it up. Now, the second thing, since you got me hot under the collar in the back of the neck when this thing came up, the second thing is, there's a $330,000-plus invoice that I invoiced you, and you didn't respond to it, and you had 10 days to respond to it, so evidently you think it's right. And why don't you just take that, this deal here, instead of putting it in there, just take it off of that $330,000 of damages?
I think that's a roll-up.
You know I'm not serious.
Yeah, so.
You know I'm not serious, but you owe me that money because you caused that kind of damage. Now, I'm almost done. One more thing. I was charged in the city court and tried on a charge that was a criminal charge. The city of Albany cannot try a criminal charge. It can only be heard in the circuit court. I went in, and when it came time on the preliminary talking, I wrote a letter to the judge and asked a motion to dismiss in writing. And he ignored it completely.
No, you, that case was dismissed, and we have repeatedly...
No, no, it is still in effect.
Actually, I think I have the copy of it in the dais somewhere.
That is a forgery. That is a forgery. If you, if you take that, and you take the original, and hold them up, the signature and everything else, it's a forgery.
Well, it's, we've kept a copy somewhere on the dais.
Get the original one, too.
And I mailed you one also.
You mailed me just the one, the second one. I never received that before I went to court.
So.
Well, I'm taking up their time.
Thank you, Mr. Owen.
And if you want to work this thing out, and I am willing to pay the $20.60 for any of the past part, but I will not be part of extortion.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm protecting you by not paying it.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think too much of you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Owen. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay, all right, not seeing anyone. Okay, let's see, council, next, we have a couple resolutions, and the first one is on page 48. And this is ICMA Retirement Corporation Deferred Comp. Stuart, want to comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This resolution proposes to amend our deferred compensation plan that we have administered through the International City Management Association to allow voluntary salary deferrals by employees, excuse me, into a Roth 457 plan. The Roth 457 plan looks very much like a Roth IRA in that eligible withdrawals can be tax-free, and it allows so employ, it allows a little variety in the retirement plan for employees to be able to participate on a before-tax basis in the 457 plan or an after-tax basis through the Roth amendments. So, this is proposing that amendment and flexibility for employees.
Question?
Uh huh.
Is there any matching by the city?
No.
Any of this?
No.
Thank you.
And I could clarify, not for the Roth, that's correct.
We do have programs, deferred comp programs, that do carry a match with them. This is cost-neutral. It costs us nothing. It's just an added option for employees.
And anytime there is that matching, we put the money in right away? We don't wait until we have to pay it? We don't defer putting it in, is what I'm saying.
No, it's put in on each paycheck as it's earned.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this item or a motion?
I move we adopt a resolution amending the ICMA Retirement Corporation 457 Governmental Deferred Compensation Plan and Trust to include the associated Roth amendment.
All right, motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is appropriating $475,000 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District, and Chief Redner. And this is a resolution on page 51.
Good evening. In this year's current budget, the Fire Department planned for and budgeted to replace its aerial ladder truck. This purchase is in line with our equipment replacement schedule of replacing frontline daily-used emergency fire engines and truck companies every 15 years. When we, when we receive the new ladder truck, we'll be taking the old ladder truck, the one we currently have, and putting it into reserve status, which will put us in a position where we will be able to provide aerial operations continuously even when one of the units goes out of service. And this will also benefit us in future ISO rating reviews that we'll go through. Due to the depleted funds in our equipment replacement, we, and when we budgeted for this and planned for this, we realized that we were going to have to rely on Albany Rural Fire Protection District to provide a portion of the money, and they have done so already, and they've paid us $475,000 toward this purchase. And the resolution before you would allow you, allow us to appropriate the funds from Albany Rural toward this purchase, and then purchase the ladder truck from Pierce Manufacturing through the HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Program. And with that, I'd entertain any questions.
Okay, Rich?
There's no loan at all with this. It's all monies we have in our pocket.
Correct.
By the time, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, with that, there's a resolution on page 51.
Yeah, I would move that we adopt the resolution appropriating $475,000 from Albany Rural Fire Protection District approving exemption from the competitive bidding requirements through a contract with HGACBUY and Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., issuing a notice of intent to award contract with Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., not to exceed $850,000 to purchase a new ladder truck.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Where's the old ladder truck going to be stored?
We don't know yet. We're evaluating different options as to which station it'll go at, looking at the possibility of moving some current apparatus around to different stations.
Think that kind of equipment would be useful downtown, perhaps?
Perhaps. We have limitations with our current station. The existing truck company won't fit in our, in our existing station. Yeah.
You need a new fire system.
Yes.
I like that idea.
And mostly, where it's really needed is a ladder truck in this area town.
Yeah.
Yeah, our tallest buildings, but besides industrial. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. Okay, council, next is adoption of the consent calendar. We have a large consent calendar this evening. Is there any items that you'd like to have pulled off? Or I'll entertain a motion?
Um, I have, let me get down to it. Let's see, it is number E2, okay, I'd say B, yeah, I'd be two.
E2?
Uh, yes, and then E3.
Okay, so, two and three?
Yeah, I have some questions I'd like to ask about items four and five.
Four and five?
Yeah.
All right. Any others? Okay, can we get a motion for the others?
I'll move for adoption of consent calendar items one and six.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, let's see, Bessie, number two, which is on page 81.
Okay, and this is, I think this is probably just a typo, but I was just wondering, it seems like the, one of the liquor licenses for the linger longer is on two different lines for the same address, and I wondered if there was two, or if there's just one, or if they need two because you just have to linger longer.
They're different licenses. Inside and outside sales are different licenses.
Okay, I missed the on and off, so that's good. And then, the other one is the surplus property with wastewater. And I'm wondering, is with a sealed bid, and what would, what would the sealed bid process cost? And is it really worth the trouble? Because I see that, you know, it's, we're not talking about a lot of money here, but I just wondered if it's worth going through the trouble.
Well, the process is just a staff process of pulling it together and putting a bid package together. It's not something we do a lot as far as selling surplus property, but we do a lot of bid projects, so we'll work with the finance department to pull that together. It really isn't a very involved process, though. So, we think that the potential additional funds we'll receive by going through that process are worth the effort.
All right, great, thanks, Mark.
Okay.
I had a question on the same issue. The material's described in attachment A, but there is no attachment.
I have it here.
I'd be, I'd just be curious to see what it is.
Yeah, as I'm passing it out. It's a 40 horsepower centrifuge, two 3,000 gallon per minute sledge pumps, and two four-stage 253 gallon per minute pumps. So, it's essentially four pumps and a centrifuge.
Our brewery.
We all need those in our garage, right?
Has this equipment been used in the past?
It was used at the old wastewater treatment plant.
I don't think we want to use it for a brewery, then.
That's funny. Okay, so, this was item two and three, Bessie, this was yours. Did you want to make a motion?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, did you want to make a motion for approving those two items?
Should we wait for, should we go ahead and do the Dicks' two, and then we can just do it all at once?
Okay, that'd be fine.
That'd be fine with me.
Just in case, yeah, okay. So, number four, then Dick, that's on page 84.
So, this is allowing the railroad to cross the street and just use part of our right-of-way rather than any other property other than right-of-way.
Just, right, all we're, all this is doing is authorizing them to have their license on Main Street because they cannot put their additional tracks all within the existing railroad right-of-way. So, we've been working with them actually for years, working through this, and as a result, the railroad is going to do street improvements on Main to Fifth Avenue through a site improvement process, and then we issue this license to allow them to occupy our right-of-way. And this is one of the key pieces for them to finish up their Millersburg Yard and hopefully get a lot of that train building that happens to block Queen Avenue up out of the Albany Yard into the Millersburg Yard.
I'm just wondering if we stand to lose property, and Jim has been wrestling with the railroad here for years, trying to get some little bits of property back. So, I mean, old at one time, I think.
This is just the, no, no property. It's right-of-way. There's already the crossing to the south. We're just extending and adding another track to the existing crossing.
On a corollary, I mean, with the settlement potential hopeful, I think it's settled, settlement of the railroad litigation, we've got an opportunity to change our relationship with the Short Line Railroad from adversarial to cooperative, and that's in the community interest. And so, I would certainly support this effort.
And item five is about the bridge going down into Bryant Park, I believe.
Correct.
And is it the supports for the bridge that are being eroded, or what is the...
Yeah, so there are several issues with that bridge. About a year ago, we came to you and got approval to actually submit an application for funding for the project. What we submitted was a request for replacement of the bridge because there are issues, some issues with the scour around the supports for the bridge, but there's also functional issues. The bridge is narrow, there's, you know, sort of a sidewalk on one side, there's no bike lanes, and that's a major access, obviously, down into Bryant Park. It's on the Willamette Scenic Bike Way route. So, we had requested replacement of the bridge. What we got back from ODOT was a letter that's saying good news, the bridge has been selected, but we've changed the scope of the project. And what it's been selected for was just the structural components dealing with the scour. And if we move forward with that, that's about a $3 million estimate from ODOT, the full replacement, we were estimating about $12 million. The problem with that is if, if we get that funding, accept that funding for the scour fix, that brings the bridge rating high enough that we will never qualify for any funds to do anything to the functional portion of the bridge. So, what we've negotiated with ODOT is they will initiate the scour design, but they have committed to also do what they call a type, size, and location effort during design, where they will evaluate other ways to either replace the bridge at its location, add some sort of bike pedestrian facility onto that bridge or adjacent to the bridge. And then, we'll have a solid cost estimate to balance what will it cost to address all the issues of the bridge versus just those structural issues. So, it's going to be kind of a two-step process. And in reality, all, all I'm asking for tonight really is, provide you information, but permission to tell ODOT, yeah, put it in the State Transportation Improvement Program. What they will then do is write an intergovernmental agreement, which I've been told will take about a year. And then, we'll bring that issue back to the council for approval, and we'll be able to talk about, do we really want to commit funds based on the intergovernmental agreement? And part of what I've negotiated with ODOT is that this type, size, location effort will be part, will be identified in the intergovernmental agreement so that we don't have a potential for a bait and switch on the city.
In the meantime, it's going to be safe, at least for pedestrians.
It is, it is safe. What we did commit to ODOT was, we'll take a look and see if there's any temporary measures. ODOT thought if we need to do anything, it's probably in the $10,000 range as we're going through the year before they start the design and a design process, permitting process, it could take several years. So, we will, but that's something we really would have done anyway with the issues there.
Thank you.
Okay.
And turn on the Oak Street signals, too, all within the next, all within the next year.
The stormy thunder, I was going to ask about that.
And don't forget Three Lakes Road. That needs to be done, yeah.
So, with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt two, three, items two, three, four, and five of the consent calendar.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right. And then, I think next, for business from the council, we did have that ordinance on Monday that we were looking at on the, the new language for the ballot measures. Did the council have extra questions on that? Or were you wanting to just contact, you know, city attorney before the next meeting? Was there anything that you wanted to bring up tonight?
Well, let me also share with the mayor what I'm planning on doing so that you have that to measure against, see if that's adequate. If the council ultimately decides to put this on the ballot, and if you decide that you're going to shoot for the September... you're going to shoot for the September election, you have until the end of June. I am still revising, there's edits going on, on the ordinance, there are no changes being proposed for the measure itself, changes on the ordinance and the ballot title, but not anything substantive, just, there's some punctuation changes, some minor wording changes. I'm going to have that finished, and it will be on your June 12th agenda for a first reading of the ordinance. That ordinance is going to call for an election in September, because that was the general direction I thought I was perceiving from the council at the work session. You will have an opportunity, of course, at that meeting to discuss whether you want any changes before a second reading, to say whether or not you want the date of the election changed, to say whether you want the date of the measure changed, and then you would be taking a, if you're still on, wanting to be on a September track, you'll take a final action at the second meeting in June, which would be a second reading and an adoption of the ordinance. So, you will have a complete, the complete month of June, essentially, to continue your consideration and discussion. I'm happy to speak with any councilors individually about any of the elements, uh, or items, uh, and of course, I'm happy to discuss it now or at any other time you wish at a public meeting.
Okay. All right.
Do we know what, in, in evaluating September, November options, do we know if any other items will be on the November ballot?
That would bring some cost savings?
And, at this, so at this point, we're just evaluating, the costs would be the same in September or November, absent some other organization placing something on one of those 2.
I think that's correct.
So, if, if we had, if we set up for September and we found out something was happening in November, would we then be able to play switchy, switchy until?
You would be able to amend the ordinance dates up until adoption, which would be the last meeting in June. Once you adopt those dates, you could still probably pull it off, you would have to do a subsequent ordinance, amending your previous ordinance, canceling the September election, and putting it on for November.
And what would that timeframe be? Do you know, Mary, what's the last date to submit for September?
And, and, in the interests of full disclosure here, too, there is a strong possibility that we will be bringing a proposal to the city council to refinance our sewer debt with our state revolving loan, uh, and to put that on the November ballot as a GO bond issue. Um, we, we believe there's going to be substantial savings, just like we, we realized with the refinancing of our water bonds. So, we, we do run the potential for having 2 elections, both of which we end up having to pay for. I realize this complicates things a bit, but that's probably the way things are going to shake out.
So, it costs half as much to have both measures on one election?
Potentially, yes. Depending on whether somebody else puts something on the ballot or not.
Well, it costs the same amount of money, we just pay Each, each issue pays half the, the toll.
It just means that if we were going to put something on November anyway, because it would have to be November, you'd be paying for that election anyway, so if you do September, you're paying for another election. The advantage, in terms of, I won't speak to the policy or political advantages, those are for the council to evaluate, but you avoid the risk of confla-, of having to, of having any confusion between the 2 measures. Uh, one measure would be to simply amend the charter. A second measure is a, is a specific debt authorization. If you do them both at the same time, I suppose there's always the possibility for confusion, if you do them separately at 2 different elections, that possibility doesn't exist. That's your call.
Does it confuse things further if we put both of them on the November ballot and say that the charter amendment did not pass? What would that do to the?
If, if, well, let me frame it this way, if the charter amendment was passed on, in September, then the, one of the things that the amendment does is it makes it clear that future debt authorizations are by simple majority vote. And therefore, the new debt issue in November would simply be a, a measure to authorize a new debt, and it would be simple majority vote, and it would be clear. If, if you did not do that in advance, then what would happen is the November debt measure would actually be framed as a second charter amendment, and you would have 2 charter amendment measures on the ballot in November. One proposing to amend the charter generally in response to the March vote, and the second would be a charter amendment to say, notwithstanding anything else in the charter, to the contrary, this new general obligation debt for these governmental purposes is authorized.
Mary, what was those?
The deadline, to get something on the November ballot, that the council would have to finalize that ordinance on August 14th council meeting, and as to who else is going to be on the ballot, we haven't asked that question. We could ask the question, I don't know what, how far out they know. Uh, we would be making a decision on the final ballot title before the county's deadlines for the SEL forms come in, so they may be able to anticipate, anticipate who's going to be on it, but they won't know necessarily in time.
Council, one other thing I, I want you to consider in this, and, and I'm, I'm trying to consider whether I'm crossing the line between legal issue and policy and, um, well, I understand.
I think it ought to be on this, I think we ought to keep it on the September ballot.
I agree.
Keep the issue separate.
We can keep, keep it on, but I, I do think we do need to see the cost, because, you know, getting hit with $27,000 for the March 1, it's, that can really add up, we get hit each 2.
And I know, but, but part of the problem is, this charter amendment that we've been working on is specifically to address the unintended consequences of the March election. The further you get from that, the more of a disconnect you will have between what's going on.
Right.
And you run the risk that voters who are therefore confused just say no or don't turn out. You have, then you have the risk that the measure doesn't pass, the end result then is, we continue to be in the limbo that we are in, and when you want to, uh, it would be better to get that certainty, that uncertainty cleared up.
Yeah, I, and I, I think the operative point here is that the situation with the debt measure that did not pass by, uh, in accordance with the interpretation of our bond counsel and our city attorney, leaves us in a position where that question, that, in resolving that question, will cost us far more than the $60,000 to have 2 separate elections, or the $30,000, if you want to look at it as, you know, one additional election. Yeah, it's a $30,000 difference, it would be the delta, and so, you're weighing that investment, if you will, of $30,000 to seek, to get clarity and to increase the likelihood of getting the situation resolved, uh, against some very, very big expenses potentially in the future. Uh, I mean, this is what we were trying to get across to people early on, is that the uncertainty of this thing would cost us money, and it already has, and it will cost us a lot more if we don't get it taken care of.
Any other questions? All right. Um, with that business from the council, Bessie, anything this evening?
No, I'm still pondering the other one. So, not right now, I might think.
And Bill, you had an item?
I do. Um, there is a, a handout I put in front of you, it, uh, lists, uh, 52 police visits to a, a particular residence, uh, in southwest Albany. Uh, I attended a neighborhood watch meeting concerning this residence, and the, the home is in foreclosure, the power's been turned off, the water and sewer been turned off, the, uh, garbage service has been discontinued, all due for financial reasons, as I understand it. And so, the police officer that was speaking to the group said, uh, you know, we're trying to get the owner to sign a, a no trespass order, so that if somebody breaks in, becomes a squatter, whatever, they can go in and kick them out, arrest them, whatever. Obviously, this is a, a big issue for the neighbors, and, and in particular, people living right next door. So, I raised my hand, and, and I said, it seems to me like it's a, it's a livability issue, if a home doesn't have power, or water, or sewer, or garbage service, and, and somebody's going to try and live there? I mean, they can't even flush the toilet, and, you know, probably not getting rid of their garbage, uh. So, I, I said I would go ahead and, and see what current rules, regulation, ordinances we have that, that will assist the, the police in that matter. Uh, I spoke with the city attorney, um, so I, I don't know if, if Jim has any further information, uh, or for discussion on this issue.
Well, um, I have circulated this, uh, through the building department and the planning department, and I don't think we have a simple code solution right now. I'll give you a, a possibility, but it's, it's still, it's got problems as well. I mean, first of all, say, this doesn't happen very often, so if you adopt a new ordinance to deal with a relatively unique situation, it may have consequences you don't intend. We could adopt an ordinance that says that it's unlawful to occupy a dwelling that does not have essential public services, and we could try to define those services as water and power, um, and things of that nature. We do have times, situations from time to time, however, where a property may be without water, for example, and they may, may get a hose from the neighbor. And that, I'm sorry, Wes, that's something.
Well, I was, yeah, I don't mean to interrupt Jim on this, but we have dealt with situations like this in the past in various ways. You know, a, a lot of it does depend on the individual circumstances, but we've had buildings where we have, um, you know, torn them down, some cases we threatened to tear them down when, when the building itself posed some hazards. Uh, we do have a property maintenance code, which requires, uh, you know, the building to have the services that we've described. You know, some of the limitations that we face with that code are that, uh, it requires the building, sometimes requires the building department to make judgment, and of course, it takes, usually, we're trying to deal with the building owner, and I don't know what the situation is in this case, I just saw this, the, the email string on this yesterday for the first time. You know, and if the owner is not cooperating at all, that can be a real problem. I mean, I've got a similar situation in the house right next door to me, where I have no idea who owns it, I'm mowing the lawn because nobody else will. Fortunately, nobody's tried to move into it. I think if somebody did, we would have an argument in its current state, uh, but, um, but I'm not sure we're without resources to be able to deal with it, and, uh, I guess what I would like to do is let our team, including Jim, have a, have a crack at it, uh, and see if we can, uh, come up with some ideas, uh, rather than having to come back to you with a new ordinance, because I, I don't know, Jim, have you looked at the property maintenance code as a, as a means of dealing with this one?
It would be, uh, a multi-month process
Yeah.
to address that which the police want to do in an hour, which is to say to the bums, "Get out." And so, if there was a way to say to the bums, "Get out," that would be a much quicker, uh, response.
I'm sure we, I'm sure we've been saying that, the question is, how successful we've been.
Well, and, and let me be clear, I was not looking for resolution tonight, I just wanted to bring the subject up. Certainly, this isn't the only house in, in town, but I can see issues where, um, a house is in foreclosure, all the service has been cut off, nobody lives there, and all of a sudden, the neighbor calls the police and say, "Hey, somebody's squatted in this house, what can you do?" Uh, I think what the police might be looking for is an additional tool in their toolbox that, "You need to get out of here, this place has been deemed not livable because there are no essential services." So.
Well, if the building's in foreclosure, somebody must be in charge of it, can't they, can't they say they don't want?
We frequently have problems identifying an owner in foreclosure. One of the things that happened during the glut of foreclosures is a lot of lending institutions did it wrong, started it wrong, got into a legal limbo, and have simply stopped. And we have situations where we go for over a year unable to get anyone to stand up and be responsible for property.
Oh, we, and, and I, in my career, Dick, I've dealt with houses where no one ever claimed responsibility, you know, we, you, the people would just keep passing it along, and, you know, uh, we, in smaller cities that didn't have as many attorneys, I was able to just tear some of them down, but that's a problem here, we.
You stood in line at the right place, could you catch the deed and just own the house?
And maybe we should have an ordinance.
Most of the ones I'm talking about, you don't want to own. It, it can, you know, we, it's amazing, I think we all believe that property has inherent value, and therefore, that someone clearly wants to own it, but that's not often the case, I mean, or, or is often not the case, that, that, that's so. People sometimes just, you know, don't want to deal with it, and we do have a fair number of those properties in the city, and I, it sounds like what we may need to do is, is be thinking in terms of some strategies where we've got, because in my, my, the one in my neighborhood is not, actually, there's more than one in my neighborhood, and they're not serious problems, because no one's tried to move into them. But I can imagine that if someone did, that would create some very serious problems real quickly.
But I wouldn't mind owning that house if I can just, somebody just gave you a deed.
Yeah, yeah, good luck with that one.
Maybe we should have an ordinance in on these abandoned houses, that if somebody doesn't step up to the plate, we'll take it over and own it, and I guarantee someone's going to step up to the plate.
Well, I think
I was looking for a litigation retain for the next 20 years.
I was going to say, I don't want to put words in Jim's mouth, but
You know, Jim could come up with some sort of line.
The problem that we run into is that there are, things tend to be pretty heavily weighted in the property owners, and, and that's rightfully so, you'd want to believe that government just can't come in and seize somebody's property, uh, without going through pretty lengthy processes, and, I mean, we get beat up, and have been beaten up, notably, on the very few occasions when we have, after years, generally, of trying to resolve a problem, uh, where we have stepped in, and I can think of, I could start citing addresses, but I won't, uh, and, uh, so, it, it isn't as simple as it sounds.
Well, let me say, when Bill approached me with this, I was initially reserved about it, because we already have a problem in city court with tranchants. Tranchants, almost by definition, can't pay a fine, there's nothing you can do with them, but put them in jail at 80 bucks a day, and, and that's a real problem for municipal court and for the city of Albany. So, my initial response was sort of reluctant. On the other hand, as Wes says, I can envision something like that in my neighborhood, and I can know that I would not want people in there. In most cases, uh, we can get an owner who will say, get, you know, "I'll sign, agree to trespass for anyone who's in there, and we can get these people out and/or arrest them." I think it would be relatively simple, but we, we need to think about it, but relatively simple to craft an ordinance in limited circumstances where a, a home does not have some specific public services. Water would be one, or maybe we'd say a combination of, you know, it's not owner-occupied, um, it lacks water, uh, it lacks electricity, uh, and in those circumstances, circumstances, say, it cannot legally be inhabited, and anyone who is in that dwelling, uh, is committing a trespass. Whereas violating law, we really couldn't prosecute it as a trespass, because a trespass is an unlawful entry into a third-party's property. If the third party is essentially consenting just to annoy the city, um, which may be the case here, um, it's probably not trespass, but that doesn't mean we still can't make it a municipal code violation. And then if it were a municipal code violation, we don't have to get the building division involved, we don't have to go through processes, a policeman could try to identify whether or not the requisite elements are met, and that's not going to be as easy as it sounds, but, but if we could identify that with those specific properties, then the officers could know when they're on patrol, that if they see somebody in one of these houses that's on the list, that they have authority to roust them out and/or arrest them if they must. So, I was initially reserved, I'm, I'm warming to the prospect that it might be necessary, but I agree with Wes, it's the kind of thing we need to study with law enforcement representatives as well as building, to see if we're going to accidentally create problems we're not thinking about.
And, well, I think it'd be worth exploring, at least, because it is
I agree.
very hard on, it's easy for us to kind of look away from it, because it's not sitting next door to us, but likes, when it happens in somebody's neighborhood, yes, they can.
Pour microphone away from Floyd, Stephen.
So.
Yeah, that'd work well.
Yeah, okay, Rich?
Oh. I can see where you want to have something.
Yeah.
The only thing concerns me about this is if you have the owner who has been accused of stuff, but has not been convicted. I mean, and, and I understand in the case of this guy, he's I mean, I understand in the case of this guy, he's been convicted of a number of things. I think Floyd had a good idea, you know, if you can make an ordinance that says you, it is illegal to occupy a home that you do not have authorization for. I mean, if that's the case, you show me your authorization when the police officer walks up, "Well, I don't have any." Okay, then turn tail and get the heck out of there.
Exactly. It's not as easy as that, because the problem's going to be, how do we prove he's not the owner? So we show up, he says, "I own this property. I have permission from the owner to be there."
Show me some ID.
He doesn't have to show ID. There's no requirement that citizens show a policeman ID.
And I think the issue's different from that, Rich. The issue might be that the house is vacant, there's no power, there's no water, there's no sewer, there's no garbage service, and somebody breaks a window, and they're living in there. Now, he can say it's his house, and "I don't have a note from the owner, and I don't have to," and so forth and so on. The point being, if the city so determines that this is not a place you should be living, I mean, how are you flushing the toilets? Where are you throwing your garbage? In the neighbor's yard?
Well, we're not going to be able to use, and again, I didn't want to do this tonight, get too far into it, but garbage is a singularly bad one to use, because people can lawfully haul their own trash to the dump. And we have more and more people outside the urban areas, as Gary Sutson sent us an email, that are choosing to live more or less off the grid, their own DC electricity, some of the other things that we're talking about. So it's something that would have to be studied pretty carefully, because in order for this to be efficient, a police officer or the police department has to be able to quickly ascertain that whatever the predicates are, that they are met. And the challenge will be in coming up with clearly defined, objective predicates that are clearly health and safety-related before we start saying that someone can't, that a guest, if you will, can't be in the property, in the owner's property. And so I don't know how difficult it will actually be to do, but I certainly agree with you that it's something that we ought to look into. And I'm, and I do think that if we could find a way to do it outside of the property maintenance code, which is somewhat time-consuming and cumbersome, if we could find a quicker way to do it, it would be more responsive to police needs and to the neighbors. I don't know whether that will be easy to do.
Well, I think the short answer, Bill, to your concern is that the city attorney is, will take care of it for us.
Look into it. Yeah.
Well, sleep's good tonight.
Something about the road, hell.
Well, and Wes, I saw one of the emails, and I think Gary made a very good point, that somebody could be off the grid, have solar, have a well, have a drain field, septic tank, haul their garbage to the dump once a week. That's not the situation I'm describing.
We understand.
So it's different, and you have to apply it in the nature it was intended to be applied.
Or they would need to have some other sort of alternative-type sources for those types of services.
Well, they're pretty soon, it gets hard for a police officer to make that determination.
It would, yeah.
Well, and quite honestly, the 75%, I mean, most statistics are made up, and this is one of them, but the majority of the information related to this particular situation was coming from the neighborhood watch group. Jim's right. The police didn't know that the water and sewer shut off. The neighbors said it had been, and they checked with the city, and you're right. So they're working together with police, and it's been a very successful project in those terms.
Should we really tell them?
I don't know.
Okay, was there anything else, Bill?
No, I better stop.
Okay, so well, good item, and I think, yeah, we'll, you know, we'll get something to explore. But yeah, I feel sorry for the neighborhood.
Your honor, I was just going to say, I was just checking out here, and I don't know, taxes are all paid, and so, but the question is, is if the city mortgage has taken it back over, or if the person is paying. But taxes are paid.
It's owned by a bank?
We don't know. I mean, it's still under the guy's name, but the banks don't change the name until, they usually sell it.
This individual was in municipal court on Tuesday. If I'd known of the problem, I could have gotten the requisite consent as a condition of a plea negotiation. I didn't know about the problem on Tuesday.
How funny.
I'm sorry, Monday.
Yeah. Oh, goodness. Yeah. Okay, Dick, do you have anything? Okay, all right. Rich, anything?
I do, unfortunately. Budget Committee went through 156, $158 million worth of budget in five and a half hours. And I voted against it, and the reason I voted against it was not because I thought that there was anything wrong with the numbers, although there were mistakes that the group found. As a singer, I grew, learning to sing, learning on Wednesday and singing it on Sunday. You learn, and you think you have about a third of it on Wednesday evening when you get finished. And when you get there on Sunday morning, you recognize you got a lot more than that when you, when you were listening. What we didn't have, and what made me uncomfortable, was I didn't have any soak time in between getting the straight skinny from staff, until the point where I knew that I could ask all the intelligent questions I needed to ask. Frankly, there have been five, well, there are a total of five of us from the, from the people in the room at the time that felt that same problem, that we have talked offline, or, in his case, came and spoke to us last Monday. I know that there can be changes, and that the committee can do something about it next January, when we have the first meeting. I'm of the opinion it needs changed. And that's my two cents worth.
Okay. And, you know, and with that, I will never probably have the best, or the best process to be able to meet every budget committee member's needs. And, I mean, do take in consideration, it was your first budget. Many of us have had many budgets, and this was probably the shortest time, no, I'd say probably back in the early 90s, before Measure 4750, we had like, two-day budgets. But we used to have a lot longer budget reviews, because there were so many more contentious issues. This was just not as contentious of issue compared to what we've seen in the past. And it's, I credit staffs for the layout of the budget document compared to the past. We used to have our line items, and we never used to have them in our budget document. Then we started receiving them in the very back of the document. And so when an item would come up, or somebody would look at the narrative, or the overall budget, there'd be a question over the difference, then everybody would be thumbing through the pages to find it in the back, which did, you know, lengthen the process. Stewart has changed that, where the line items are put with each budget, and that really makes the flow so much better when it comes to being able to, going over those line items. So a lot of our time shortening is because of the layout of the document is done a lot, you know, better than in the past, too.
Mayor, I've been dealing with budgets for 40 years. It is not, I mean, there's a reason why, at the national level, they have one piece of the budget come up at a time. It is so that they can, because it's so gigantic in their case, they can deal with it. I don't think there's a single person that was at the dais or otherwise, other than staff, who would be able to just open that document to just someplace and explain everything in there.
Well-
I mean, if, you know, if you can, if you can, you're a whole lot better than most. And-
Well, I almost guarantee I can on that budget. I've seen enough of them over the years, and I know quite a bit of us have. But with that, I know that, that's your opinion, and the-
Well, it's the opinion of five people who are in the room.
And the budget committee can. They can meet weekly if they want. They can meet as many times as they want. But when we did meet in January, that was going over the budget calendar. So that would be the time to look in January, which is by state laws, to, you know, adopt a budget calendar. And you can add as many days as you would like to that budget doc, to review the budget on that. So, okay, anything else? Okay, all right, Ray?
Just a quick update on the Oak Street lights.
Sure. We actually, we have a contract in place to do the restriping on the gun shop parking lot, which is what ODOT is requiring. The contractor actually was ready to go as early as last weekend. Let me back up. The gun shop, the property owner wants the work done on the weekend, so that it impacts the business as little as possible. So we had a contractor ready to go as early as last weekend. Because of the weather and the concern about rain, and needing dry weather, they didn't move forward. We're hoping this weekend might work out. It's going to be a weekend-by-weekend assessment, whether to go in there and start the process. We have notified ODOT that we have the contractor in place, so that our hope is that as soon as we have that done, ODOT can move quickly. They do a final inspection and turn on of the signal. ODOT has told us they are happy with all the work that's been done on the signal, that there aren't any other punchless items. So I'm hopeful that maybe as soon as next week, we might get the signals on, if we can get the work done in the parking lot this weekend. But I don't control ODOT's schedule once we get the work done.
Okay, all right. Anything else? All right, Floyd?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. The only thing I have, is I wanted to mention and thank staff for the big city pickup that was done. Great, great turnout, great job on Monday. Amazing to see how much, you know, stuff was hauled away. But also, there was quite a bit of events in Albany on Saturday, and it was great to see that. A great turnout for the Honor Flight movie, and also, there was even an event out at the War Memorial. So, but also, I attended a luncheon the other day, and that was for Evergreen Samaritan Hospice House, and that was completed last year, the hospice house. And they have already exceeded their expectations. It's been full on the one wing, and now they're raising funds so they can be able to, you know, operate the other half of that facility. So it's been a great success, and most of their clientele is Albany residents that they have been serving in that, in the hospice house. So Samaritan Health Foundation is raising funds again for, to be able to complete that project. And I don't know if any of you have been in there to see that project, but it is a really nice facility. So very nice. We're real fortunate in Albany to have that facility. But, okay, that's it that I have. And Wes, anything?
We do have several items tonight. First of all, just want to let, remind folks that the budget process is not over. We have a budget hearing scheduled before the council on the 12th of June, where if there are lingering questions, either from among council members or from the public, there is an opportunity to have as long a discussion as you would like, on the budget at that time. You would also have the opportunity to set other dates if you wanted to have additional review at that time. We will be bringing an issue to you for discussion. As you may have read in the newspaper, there has been a successful appeal by HP of their tax bill over in Benton County. And I was a little surprised to learn that even though we've never gotten any money from HP, when there is a refund of taxes, it is taken from all the taxing jurisdictions. And so our share of that means that we will experience about a total, among all city agencies that receive money, this is the, that includes both our public safety levy, our general fund taxes, and our urban renewal agency, of about $400,000, with a loss to the general fund in the order of $280,000 to $300,000. And so, we believe that we have sufficient room, if you will, within the budget to accommodate that without having to make any service cuts. We'll be coming to you with a proposal on how we would do that. But it is obviously one of those things that kind of drops from the sky. We had no way of knowing this was going to be decided. And, I don't know, Stewart, did you want to say a couple words about it?
You want me to try to explain why again?
No, no. He's, Stewart has tried, has now explained to me at least twice why the city has to help make this up. I mean, I understand the explanation, but I don't understand the logic.
Just crazy, yeah.
So anyway, and I-
Retroactive over the last so many years?
Yeah, it involved taxes, a total of about $9 million is what the newspaper article said, and that it occurred between a number of years. The problem was that the judge was highly critical of the state's appraiser, and so, you know, it had nothing to do with Benton County. It had nothing to do with us. We can count our blessings, I guess, in one sense, in that the city of Corvallis is losing over $2 million. And, you know, but it's obviously not something that is helpful at a time when we've been consistently having to, you know, cut resources and sort of, you know, put strain on the budget, so.
So isn't, but HP is fully in Corvallis' city limits?
Yes.
Just amazing to think that, I mean, so they were the ones, they were recipients of those taxes, the city of Corvallis, but yet, all other taxing districts are getting hit because of that. Wow. Just not right.
You know, perhaps we can blame Counselor Johnson. She, I know she was with the assessor's office for a number of years, so.
In Lynn County, remember? Lynn County. It had nothing to do with HP.
That is just amazing to think. Why would we get hit on that? Wow.
You have never profited from any of their tax bills?
Yeah. Well, Stewart is going to add some insight.
Yeah.
Let me speak to the issuing area without getting too much into detail, which I don't think I could describe real well. But taxes are segregated according to the overlapping jurisdictions, based on what's levied by the overlapping jurisdictions. When $1 of property tax is paid to the county, it's segregated according to those, the portion that each one gets of the total allotment. So the fact that a property tax is paid from Sweet Home, or Corvallis, or North Albany, is still segregated among all of the taxing jurisdictions. So effectively, we did receive some property tax from HP, because their property tax, as it was paid, was segregated among all the taxing jurisdictions, based on what percent of total our assessment was. And then the application of the refund is, the refund is paid first. So now, if that same $1 in property tax is paid, the refund comes off of that before the balance is segregated. So if the refund is, on that dollar is, the refund is 10 cents, then what's segregated in the next is the remaining 90 cents. And that's, so our portion is what's taken off the top before the property tax is segregated.
Stewart, do you know, is that, is that the tax that they're talking about, the refund, or did they include the interest in it also?
Interest is included as well, and my understanding was at 12%.
Yes, 12%. I just wondered if that was considered in the three, what, the 385? I mean, the total, total?
Well, as far as I know, I know there's still some question about how the shortfall was to be dealt with, whether or not, whether or not the state was going to appeal the ruling, and whether or not they would try and spread the repayment out over time, which again, makes no, at least by the rules of logic, makes no sense, because all of us have access to cheaper money than 12%. So why we would let it, you know, string out over years at that interest rate would, I have no idea. And I would certainly fight very hard to avoid that.
So was Benton County, I kind of heard a little rumor that Benton County was going to let the jurisdictions pay it back over time, or not?
Well, that's still not determined, as to whether there is an option or not, if it's done as a group, or if there are individual options. As more is determined, what the law allows, my understanding as well is that Benton County is going to invite all of the overlapping jurisdictions, and I guess there are about 57 different total districts that have, participate at one point or another in the total property tax for Benton County, that there would be a combined meeting to explain what the implications are, and if there are options, what the options would be.
Wow.
So, property owners within the city of Albany, in Benton County, paid Benton County taxes, and in Benton County wrote a check to the city of Albany, or transferred money to the city of Albany at some point?
Residents in the city of Albany, or businesses in North- Residents in the city of Albany, or businesses in North Albany, paid taxes to Benton County, and those taxes were then segregated, and Albany received its portion of the total property tax back.
Makes sense, that's how we got the money.
So it does stand to reason that, based on that, on the way it is collected, when HP paid its property tax that was based on an over-assessment, or assessment that has since been appealed and reduced, that a portion of that overpayment came to city of Albany based on our portion of total property tax in the county in that year.
Yeah, I think this third explanation is better than the previous two.
I'm getting better at it.
Yeah.
Wow, that's just amazing, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Well, yeah, I mean, we do have good news, in the sense that I think it's, while it's a painful amount, and it certainly detracts from things that we would like to be able to do, notably, our equipment replacement fund is the one that's sort of got, you know, the big target on it. We are at least in a position to deal with this without immediate impact on our citizens. So I think that is something to feel relatively good about. And I don't think that it really, at least in the short term, jeopardizes our financial health. I mean, we still are maintaining reserves sufficient so that we can, when we do need to, for example, refinance, that we can get the ratings we need to realize the savings that we're hoping for. So, yeah, there is kind of a silver lining in all of this, but it's, you know, you have to look pretty hard because the bottom line is, is that we're losing revenue at a time where we have already lost a lot of revenue, so. The second thing I wanted to briefly mention is that there will be a meeting tomorrow with affected property owners and folks who are interested in trying to perhaps amend our urban growth boundary, to improve our inventory of industrial land. This is an issue I briefly reported on a while back. I just wanted to assure the council that we're still looking at it because I think it represents an opportunity to trade land that is currently within our urban growth boundary, that is effectively unusable for industrial purposes, for land that is outside our urban growth boundary that would make an ideal and basically ready-to-go industrial site. And this is kind of a rare opportunity because it's very unusual that people who own property within a UGB want to get out of it. But that's the situation we have right now over east of the freeway with this one parcel. So work continues on that, and I'll keep you advised. Obviously, there's a lot of process you have to go through to make this happen, but there are no, at least, you know, inherent barriers to getting it done. So it could be a very positive thing in terms of economic development. And then finally, Jim and Stuart wanted to talk with you briefly and get some guidance on a situation with property that we, that was involved in the local improvement district that helped fund the Timber Ridge Road improvements. And Stuart and Jim, I'll let you guys explain that.
Thank you, and without taking too much time, we do need some direction from the city council, and let me lead off by giving some background information. This is regarding the Timber Ridge.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
LID, Local Improvement District. If you recall, these improvements were put in in cooperation with GAPS, really initially, to provide services for Timber Ridge Elementary School. It also provided infrastructure and service to other tax lots in the vicinity. In February, I think it was in February, we had a work session where a proposal was brought forward by the Brandis Trust representatives, proposing to partition the tax lot immediately north of Knox Butte Road, and proposing a multi-housing development on one of those parcels. Yeah. And that received a favorable, or indication from the city council that there would be support for the concept. The concept was pursued. There was a pre-application meeting scheduled in our building and planning office. That meeting was subsequently postponed and then canceled altogether, and it appears that that project's no longer a viable project. As an alternative, we're falling back then on that these parcels have been in, or the assessments have been in place now for maybe two years even, and there's only been a payment, a partial payment on the southernmost, which actually is the parcel south of Knox Butte. What has been proposed are, the city by ordinance and under the Bancroft Bonding Act has authority, and we've investigated a little bit, pursuing foreclosures on those properties because of a failure to make any payments. The property owners, through their representative, their attorney, Tom Gallagher, has, in lieu of foreclosure, proposed a deeds on those property, and they would like to propose deeding the properties north of Knox Butte to the city in exchange for a credit of $120,000 on the tax lot south of Knox Butte. They anticipate that as values do come back and development comes back, that they'll be able to recoup enough earnings, enough in the sales price of the property on the south that is still a viable project for them, return some of that value. The city's investment in the local improvement districts is the cost of the improvements. So what would be deeded is property, the property certainly has value in and of itself, and the assessment for our local improvement districts was merely the cost of the improvements plus a rate of interest in return. So it appears to be, it would be beneficial for the city to consider the proposal. There will be, in order to move forward with the legal documents and process that Jim will probably want to address, as I don't state it quite correctly, that we will want to secure our interest free of other encumbrances on those properties. And so we would probably want to require that they incur some costs in verifying that those liens are free and clear other than our lien, so that we would secure our interest in those parcels in a deed in lieu of foreclosure. And our costs at this point would be the credit towards the assessment on the southern parcels. So we're asking for direction from the council before we ask them to incur costs associated with verifying those liens.
Let me try and make it more simple, and I may make it worse. If you look at the property to the north and you exclude the Gap site, you've got the property up here, you've got this property and this property. These properties are in default, they've been in default for more than a year, and as a consequence, the city can foreclose. Foreclosure is not terribly complicated, there's process, there's expense. One of the unusual things to consider is that when you're foreclosing based on a failure to pay local improvement district assessments, you can't get a deficiency. So the only thing that we're going to get is the property. So for this part of the property, accepting a deed in lieu of foreclosure, assuming that there's no other encumbrances, is a no-brainer. The reason it's a no-brainer is because there isn't anything else we can get other than the property. So to oversimplify, it doesn't matter what it's worth, that's all there is. In addition, to take comfort that you're not making a bad decision, this land has some value. How much it's valuable, how valuable it is, we don't know, kind of depends on the real estate market. It was at one time very, very high, if you look at what GAPS paid for it, and then during the recession, it went very, very low. Land prices are starting to come back. In order for anyone to develop this bare land, they would need to put in the infrastructure, which was funded by the local improvement district. So whether that, those roads and sewers and water lines, whether they cost $1 million or $10 million to put in, that's what they would cost at a minimum to put in. And that's the only city investment. What we're getting in return for that investment is not only those sewer lines and those water lines and that road, but the accompanying dirt on both sides as well. So if you assume that a water line was worth $1 million, because that's what it cost to put it in five years ago, well, then you're getting that water line for what it costs, and you're getting all of the dirt around it for free. But again, it's a no-brainer in terms of whether you want to take, whether you want to get that land back, because that's all there is. Here's the issue. They want, in return for giving this land to us without any fight, they want us to credit this property with, I think it's one year's assessment, isn't it?
No, it's quite, the total assessment on the south property is $213,000.
I beg your pardon. They want us to credit it for $120,000, and there was a computation on that. That isn't any money out of our pocket because it's a credit on the assessment. And if, if with that credit, it buys them time, which is what they really want, time to keep the southern part out of foreclosure, and they therefore sell it and get it developed, then we will get paid back the balance of the assessments, and our hope and our expectation is that commercial development on this property will make the other properties, which we're going to own, the public is going to own, more valuable. So the issue is, are you willing in return for deed in lieu of foreclosure on this property, not the need to condemn to give them the $120,000 credit? That's really what the question is.
So I'm confused, the little crosshatch area, is that what they're wanting to deet?
No, that's just some information regarding what area was assessed for the water line. It really doesn't have anything to do with, this is an attachment that was part of the LID, so that crosshatch.
Stuart, aren't they proposing all of this property? And all of this property? All of this property and all of this property?
Yes, and those constitute two tax lots.
So what's omitted is the Gap school site. So it gives you some idea of the size of the property we're talking about.
They're willing to kind of trade us?
They're going to, they're prepared to save us the cost and the hassle of foreclosure because we're entitled to this now because they're in foreclosure. Now, one of the advantages.
So they're willing to give us the northern portion, but they want to keep the southern?
They want to keep the southern if they can, but all they want, what they want is $120,000 of credit on the assessment.
So what would it cost to foreclose it?
It probably wouldn't cost all that much in legal fees, and it's probably gonna cost, God, you're gonna pay for an expensive title, a litigation guarantee, you're probably gonna spend $20,000 to $25,000 at most on the foreclosure, I would think. Hold on, though, here's one of the variables. In the foreclosure, that foreclosure's gonna take at least six months and probably more than that. During that time, they have the right to come pay us off and get the property back. So if somebody, if this is a rising market, and I'm not a real estate speculator, I don't know. If it is a rising market, we would have a chance to get this property now, and no one could step in and buy it out from under us at an increased price. So if properties are going up, if another development proposal comes in and offers to buy it from Timber Hill while our foreclosure is still underway, they can stop the foreclosure, and we would lose, if there is a windfall, we would lose that windfall, or that additional.
So what do we owe total on that LID? What is still, you know, still on that?
The northernmost property tax lot ends up being 100 after all the other number to the end of it. Has two liens against it, one lien, the estimated payoff is $1,800,000. Lean number two, the estimated payoff is $211,000. So there's $2 million of assessment on the tax lot 100, which is the north.
Well, that also includes this one, doesn't it, really, Stuart?
No, that's tax lot south.
So we would have to end up basically eating that, that $2 million?
No, we're just deferring, we would retain the value in the property.
Right, we'd get in the property, but they're walking away.
We've already paid for it. We've already paid all those utility costs. We paid them basically out of the Pepsi money, didn't we?
Yeah, and that's what I'd like to add as well. This LID, rather than funding through a bank, we funded as loans out of our Pepsi settlement proceeds, with the expectation that we would have a greater return than we could get in the local government investment pool on an interest rate. The amounts that I described that are owing are based on an interest rate of 6.5%, where the pool is currently returning 0.55%. All I'm really interested in recovering out of our local improvement district is the cost of the assessment plus the interest. That was our intent going in. That was, that was why it was acceptable to the city council to use those proceeds for this purpose, because we had other purposes in mind that were downstream aways, and we had time for this to happen, and we still have time for it to happen. But I would really like to reemphasize again what our objective was in using that funding source for this local improvement district. And that should be our objective again, because we have those dollars earmarked for economic development and for police and fire facilities. The timing is not, the timing is open, but the objective can still be achieved for those purposes.
So basically, that northern portion would really, we're paying around $2 million for it, because we still have to pay the, we still have to pay the, we've paid it out of the Pepsi fund, but it's basically still money that we have put towards that project.
It's a, it's an asset that we've moved to property and out of the local government investment pool. So we still own a comparable asset, and what Jim is describing, and what I've felt is, there's value in the cost of the improvements, and there's value in the land.
Right, no, that part I agree, but it's not like this is free and clear, it was still $2 million.
We would need to be able to sell to recoup.
Yeah.
Trade that resource back to cash.
So probably what we really need is to really see kind of what those comparables are, what, see what the property is really valued, it'd be nice to kind of know that.
It doesn't make any difference, because we can't get anything, I mean, all we can get is the property. Now, so the only, there isn't any question on whether we want to get this property back, because that's all we can get. The only question is, are you willing to give them a credit of $120,000 to get it now without going through the foreclosure? Part of, I guess, what's in the back of Stuart's mind and my mind is that if real estate activity improves over the course of the summer and this property becomes more valuable, and we have to think frankly, that all of that land is worth more than simply the cost of the sewer line and the water line and the road, because you'd have to put those in anyway, we'd like to see the city taxpayers own that asset and make that value. Is that worth $120? We kind of think it is, but we can't say it to you scientifically because we don't have the chops to do that.
Question for me is, if we, if we would go ahead and foreclose, how much do they owe in order to get out of foreclosure? What do they have to, what do they have to pay to get out of foreclosure?
They'd have to pay the same dollar amount, those just discussed.
Okay, so we would have the $2 million plus, but we would lose out on the ability to get the increase in value?
If it's worth more.
And we pay $120,000 worth of value in order to get that?
If it's, if it's only worth the $2 million, then there's no, then there's really no point in doing it.
Right.
If we think that it might be worth more than that, because logic says to us that if you've got a big chunk of land, and if in order to develop that land for residential purposes, you would, anybody would have to put in infrastructure, and all, and we're getting it for the price of the infrastructure alone, plus the $120,000, that seems like a pretty good investment. But it's, that's a judgment for you to make.
Has anybody estimated how many lots are in those pieces of property? Several hundred?
No, I don't think anybody's done that analysis, Dick. I think some of the, there are pieces of land that are not developable. There are lands, you know, there's wetlands and some things in there as well.
If you look at those adjacent blocks, which are eight lots to the block, there's a lot of blocks in there, even if there's some wetlands.
Yeah, well, and.
And if the average price of a lot is how much, I don't know, what do you pay for a lot these days?
35 to 50.
Yeah, just depends on.
I guess in this depression, there's no value to a lot essentially, but it's coming back. I hear that they're, the price of houses are coming up, and the problem is there aren't enough houses to sell, so it's coming back. I think this is a good deal.
Yeah, the Parks Department, if you remember back, came to us about purchasing that northern lot for a park, and then the council made the decision not to because the price tag was really high at that time. So this is something for, you know, oh, gosh, what was that? Probably three or four years ago.
About 2008, I think.
Yeah, was it 2008?
2008, it's gonna be worth a hell of a lot more than it is now.
Right, yeah, and so, I mean, we do need park land, you know, for, to serve this area, so this would end up, you know, giving us area we could choose which piece you want.
The whole thing's not gonna be a park.
Oh, no, we could choose it now.
I mean, the other advantage is if you own it, as opposed to having somebody else buy it, and I know that the city's not in the development business, but I've. else buy it, and I know that the city's not in the development business, but I've heard the council many times say, gee, I wish it could be developed this way and not that way. And you can't make those necessarily, those impositions on a property owner if they're outside of what the development code says. On the other hand, if the taxpayers own it, then their elected representatives can make whatever decisions they want. You have a lot more control.
Yeah.
Sharon, I'll make clarification on the numbers. So, for tax lot 100 and 101 to the north of Knox Butte, the total assessment due is slightly over 2 million dollars, correct?
Actually, I didn't get done. So, as I, I mentioned the two assessments on tax lot 100, which is the northernmost, and that, that's west of the school. It has two liens that total 2 million dollars.
Right.
Okay, then there's tax lot 101. Tax lot 101 has 1 and 1/2 million.
Total.
Oh, wow.
So now we're up to 3.5 million, plus the 120 that they want credit for, that we would end up paying ourselves back for out of some future proceeds, should we sell that. So we're, we're in the process of dealing with a 3.6-plus million dollar decision. And the question then becomes, do we think, over time, that the value of 101 and 100 exceed 3.6-plus million dollars?
Which at the time, it would be developed in the future, would be the cost of the infrastructure, only.
Well, that's a marketing tool.
Yeah.
Well, the cost of the infrastructure and the cost of the land, the fact that the infrastructure is already in, they've got, you know, they don't have to wait for the timing to run it through the process, those are all marketing tools. We still need to net 3.6 million to come out square.
Well, kind of. I mean, bear, bear in mind, first of all, we're going to get this land unless somebody pays it off. So we'll, we'll get back, that is, either, one of, one of two things are going to happen. We're either going to come into possession of this, or somebody's going to pay off the, the outstanding obligations on the land.
In which case, that new purchaser puts us in a position no worse than that Brandis made their payments in the first place.
Exactly. And bear in mind too, that the interest rate that was charged to this was 6 percent, so that the original assessment was something far less than the total of 3.6 million, I'm assuming. Is that, or was that just?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, I mean, what, the, the, I, I, I think we're, we're kind of getting caught up in, in numbers that in some cases aren't all that real, because nobody's earning 6 percent.
I guess, I just remember back when Republic had trouble, and we ended up owning four, five, 600 lots in South Albany that took us decades to liquidate.
Yeah.
And those were plotted lots, as I remember.
Yeah. They had foundations in them, remember?
Yeah, some of them did, yeah.
I mean, Dick and Sharon are probably our best institutional memory.
Right, but you're not going to avoid, barring somebody paying this off, which, you know, you're not going to avoid that. The issue that's before you today is, do you want to give them some credit so that they might be able to realize some value from that southern lot? Or do you want to just go ahead with the foreclosure process on this whole thing?
Whose number is the 120? Did they generate that, or do we have some rationale for why that might be a good number?
I don't know why they picked that number.
So, they picked it?
Yeah, and we, and one of the other options we can have is, you can send us back to hard bargain some more.
Right, I mean, I certainly would.
Okay, I don't want to discuss the dollar amount and what the hard bargain number would be in public session.
Bottom line, we're going to get all the 2. whatever, 3 million dollars when somebody gets a building permit. It's already a done deal. The only thing we have to worry about is whether or not we can sell the property for a dollar more than we paid for it. I mean, it's, you know, as far as us having it, it's a no-brainer. Because when it is developed, at whatever time it's developed, we will get all of the money back for the improvements, all of it.
How many acres?
And then we'll be able to sell the land on top of that.
Acres?
It's a no-brainer.
I was just wondering, you know, how many acres that was? Oh, good.
Um, the top tax lot 100 is 52.27 acres. 101 is 22.84. And then the one they, that they want to keep is 23.84.
So it's.
And so, and.
So 75 acres close to that, is what they're looking at?
Yeah, and the total value of the, well, the total real market value, apparently they must be in some sort of a farm deferral or forest deferral or something. But it's about, let's see, 1.5 plus 864, so almost, almost 2 million in value for the property.
0.5 and 864 would be 2.4.
If I could suggest for the council, why don't you give us, why don't you say to us for tonight that you're not currently willing tonight to authorize that deal? Why don't you direct Stuart and myself to go back and approach the property owner with a proposal? And I don't think there needs to be any secret. What I'm going to propose, under the law right now, what, what they're really trying to protect, which way, which button I push, I'm sorry, they're trying to protect this property. They will reach the one-year anniversary of their deficiency in August. At August, we could foreclose this property. Why don't we approach them with this proposal? Why don't we say that we will, instead of one year, we'll give them an additional two years? Not any money, not any credit on the assessment. An additional two years before we will give, begin foreclosure on that property, in return for a deed in lieu on this property. Then you're not out of pocket. And then it means, when, and if they are then able, in the additional two years, with the increase in market value, to market that property at a profit, they would still have to pay 100 percent of their assessments. And that way, you're not giving anything up, but what they would get that would give, I think, and I don't know how they will receive this, but I'm willing to say it in public session, the benefit they gain is time, which in a rising real estate market is what they're seeking actually to achieve, I believe. And from the public standpoint, that way you'd get all your money back. So, if, if you're, right, if you're comfortable, I would say that the direction, if you're okay with that, the direction, I will go back with the count, to them and say, council didn't like your, your proposal, here's what we'll give you as a counterproposal. You give us the north part in a deed in lieu. I'm also going to require them to buy us purchasers title insurance, which will cost about 4,000 dollars to them, to guarantee that there will be no liens prior to ours on that property, in return for which we will contractually agree not to take in, we will contractually agree to forbear on any foreclosure activities for two additional years over what you have under the law right now, to give you the time to sell your property. I don't know what their response will be. I think they might take that, and then I, if, if they don't, I can come back to you at that time and tell you where we are. There is no urgency.
So Jim, did you, what you just said, does it mean that we wouldn't be doing any foreclosure on the top two properties?
If, under my proposal, they would deed those properties to us in lieu of foreclosure.
Okay, all right.
And what we would give up is, we would delay foreclosing on this property, even though they're not going to make payments over the next two years. But the, but the bill would keep ratcheting up. The debt would keep going up with the 6 percent interest.
Okay, yeah. And Stuart, how much, how much did they pay on the bottom one as, with the LID? So they made a payment?
They made one semi-annual payment of 15,688, yeah, 15,688 dollars.
Okay, thanks.
And we, yeah, we can't stop.
Yeah, and I think that gives it to them.
But if they accept in my counter, what Dick is wondering is, the risk we run in this, is that if the market does jump up and there is activity, we could lose our chance to get this property for just the cost of the infrastructure. And I think that's an acceptable risk, but I could go in there and, I mean, we can make this counterproposal, Mr. Gallagher is out of the, out of state for a week or so, but we could get right back to him with a counter and see where we are.
I think a bird in the hand is worth more than two in the bush.
No, it's just, there could be an opportunity. But, but I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't think it enjoys four votes of the council to accept the current offer, unless I'm miscounting the noses. And so, would you be comfortable, do I have your consent to make that counterproposal? Is there anyone who would be opposed to that counterproposal? Okay.
No, and I mean, looking at it, it's around 50,000 an acre, so you can get a lot of lots out of that acre. I mean.
But as Wes says, it's not all developable. It's, there's a lot of wetlands.
Right, and we do need park land, so, yeah, okay.
I think you need to realize what that thing was originally worth before the balloon burst.
Yeah, because then it'll come back up.
And it's going to come back close to that.
Yeah.
Okay, is council okay with that direction for city attorney?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else, Wes, that you had? Okay, and staff, Marilyn, have anything? Mark, any, anything else? Floyd, you said there was some great news from one of our West Albany teams?
Well, I was almost late, because West, the West Albany girls softball won their first playoff game against Willamette University, out of, University, Willamette High School, out of Eugene, 3 to nothing. So they're moving on in the playoffs. Next game, I believe, is Friday night.
Oh, good, great.
It was just an accident that Floyd's granddaughter happens to play for West Albany.
Well, why do you think I was sitting on that rain? I'm not a duck.
Wow, I bet it hasn't rained. Okay, is that it then? Okay, our next meeting will be June 10th, and for work session, our regular session is June 12th. And thank you, folks, for attending this evening and sticking through. We had a later meeting tonight, and thank you, I commend you for that. Thank you.